...advisory committee, so we are reconvening for our regular session of the town council. Let's start off with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Chilton has excused.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item six on our agenda, closed session report. I don't think we have one.
There's no report this morning.
Thank you. Then, we are going to, this is a bit of an administrative item, but we're going to recess technically from the regular council meeting to our Yountville Finance Authority Special Meeting. And I will call that meeting to order. We have a roll call, I think, already taken.
All members are present?
The next item for the Finance Authority Agenda would be approval of the November 6 minutes. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Public comment? I'm going to assume that we have no public comment on this, since I see no public ready to comment. Our next item, Consent Calendar for One Item of Adoption. Let's see. Thank you, guys, for being here. Keep it safe. So we have this one Consent Calendar item.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So we will be reconvening again on December 4 as this body. Regular items, none. Any Finance Authority reports from staff? I'm seeing none. We'll move, I'll take a motion for adjournment from the Finance Authority.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are going to reconvene back to our regular agenda as the Yountville Council, Town Council. And we will adopt, or at least ask for, an adoption of tonight's agenda for the Yountville Town Council.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Unanimous approval. Again, with no public here, there's no public comment unless someone steps in in the next couple of minutes. We'll move on then to the Consent Calendar. We have two items. Is there any question, comment, or action?
Do you like a motion? I'd like to move to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving right along. We do have a presentation listed for the Allied Council, but I see that we do not have our representative from the council present this evening, so we will move on. If there is a time during our agenda that a representative shows up, then we will look forward to hearing that report. Let's go to our first public hearing, item, Agenda Item 12A, our only public hearing, Zoning Ordinance and Design Ordinance Amendment. Let's start with the staff report, please.
Thank you. This is a proposed ordinance amending titled 17 and 18 of the Municipal Code. That is the zoning ordinance and the design ordinance. There are several amendments involved in the proposal that comes out of work from the Zoning and Design Ordinance Amendment Ad-hoc Committee that was formed in October of 2011. The membership included Mayor Dunbar, Councilmember Hall, and then two members of the ZDRB Chair, Jason James, and Board Member, Vice Chair, excuse me, Rob Anglin. They had several meetings over the course of that time, since October 11th, including one field trip and out to Old Town to look at conditions out in the field. And what came out of that were numerous clarifications within the design ordinance for the H District, that's for the Old Town Historic Zoning District, including descriptions of building forms and materials, window materials, roofing materials, better definition of neighborhood character that tied the design of a dwelling to its setting, local setting. Also clarified setbacks for accessory buildings. One of the things that came out of this neighborhood character was a prohibition on architectural forms that are not native to Old Town and indigenous architectural forms, such as Tuscan and Mediterranean forms. More definition of roof materials, and they got into looking at the materials that are provided for in the existing ordinance that include a discussion of metal roofs, and they expanded the allowance for metal roofing, prohibited some of the clay tile roofing from the approved list of roofing materials. Exterior materials emphasized and encouraged wood and native materials, but cautioned against the overuse of stone and only as accent, and the prohibition on full-on stone buildings represented by Mediterranean Tuscan styles. The, provided a more clarification for windows and encouraged divided light windows and provided a standard for a ratio of one and a half to one height-to-width ratio. Discourages sliding glass and large picture windows, sliding glass doors, I should say, and picture windows visible from the street. Little more emphasis on the columns that support porches, that they're substantial and proportional to the size of the porch. Driveway material in Old Town, there was a change where we have an unusual situation of Old Town having the gravel shoulders, and the better definition of the driveway material matching the apron that leads up to the driveway from the street. They, the driveways can be a non-paved material, but whatever material is in the driveway must be matched by the apron that connects to the street. And then into residential buildings, some increases for up to 10,000 square feet for single-family residences, for lots that exceed the maximum lot size of 8,000 square feet. There are some out there. But then after 10,000, it's capped at 25 percent of the lot area. Similar for duplexes and multiple-family units that they maintain up on lots 8,000. 3,200 square feet is the maximum, which is the 40 percent, up to 10,000. And triplexes and fourplexes can go up to 10,000, but are capped at 4,000 square feet. The, there's some more language about referencing the exceptions for two-story residences. When the 50 percent maximum is already met, there's already some provisions in there for the ZDRB to consider allowing, under certain circumstances, that 50 percent maximum to be exceeded. Accessory buildings and other types of facilities you find in rear yards typically fireplaces and barbecues, cabanas, built-in kitchens. Some more clarification of the setbacks that would be required for those, and that they're excluded from the FAR provisions, provided they don't exceed the six-foot maximum height, I should say. Lot of definition movement on moving the exceptions for FAR out of the, into the definition section. A new definition for duplex that balances out the square footage into each unit, rather than having one large unit and one smaller unit that functions more of a second unit, that now they're required to be within 10 percent of each other in floor And then I mentioned the FAR exceptions. There is one clarification we will probably would propose inserting between now and the final, and it has to do with accessory structures that are occupy, that you can occupy, meaning sit in, like a gazebo, a cabana. Those terms, gazebo and cabana, are a little open to interpretation, and we want to bring some definition to them that they can be occupied. They're open on all sides except up to two, and they are typically covered structures. And these are accessory structures and landscape elements that are distinguished from barbecues and fireplaces that are exterior. And that concludes my report. There is a, this is an introduction of a proposed ordinance 409-12 that's included in your packet, and then the highlighted, also included, highlighted sections of the ordinances that are being amended. Have any questions?
Thank you. I'll invite questions to the staff report. I know, having been on the ad hoc committee with Councilmember Hall, we went through, for several hours, all of it was just presented in a couple of minutes, so there may still be some questions of our non-ad hoc committee members. So Councilmember Muller?
Um, yes. A clarification, especially based on the staff report, is, what I'm looking at is section, it's under duplexes, 18.36.030.
What page is that?
Seventh of 19, and number two, D2. So, based on what's in the staff report, I'm assuming what you mean here is the floor area ratio is to be a maximum of 0.40. This says it shall be 40. You mean up to a maximum?
The...
You're not mandating that all duplexes be 40 percent FAR?
Right. Yes.
Okay. And then that's, if that's true, then also on the next page, under triplexes, fourplexes, and apartments, D2 would be the same.
Same thing.
Up to a maximum.
So would it be appropriate to say, anywhere there's a floor area ratio listed like that, it's meant to be a maximum floor area ratio?
Yes.
And I think it is, except right there.
Okay. And those two?
It was "shall be."
That's a good catch, because that's the existing ordinance. We're leaving that alone, and it reads that that way, so, yeah, that should be a good clarification.
Okay. And then the other, the table under, on page 6 of 19, under section, what is this? B3. I think you probably want leading zeros in the second column, like you put in the rest of the text, right?
0.275, 0.3.
And then, I'm confused about the affordable percentage. What does that mean, that when you have a FAR of .275, the affordable percentage is 20 what?
20 percent.
Will that staff respond to her questions?
I'm making sure I understand the question.
Well, I just don't know what I read. It says affordability of such units shall be evenly distributed among, sorry, sorry, public. The three affordability categories, except of a higher proportion. I mean, so, and these are single-family lots?
This, yeah.
I just don't know what that means.
The distribution has to do with, we attempt to, if there's three units, for instance, the most straightforward example, then we would be distributing them as a very low, a low, and a moderate unit. Frequently, there are odd numbers, or for other reasons, the applicant has proposed a different distribution, where there would be maybe tending towards more in the moderate range.
Right.
At the night project, we ended up with a very low, low, and two moderates in that But otherwise, we attempt to distribute them through the three target income groups, affordable income groups.
So how do I read the first column in that table and get to that conclusion?
Well, the table has to do with the bonus. This is a bonus program for increasing the amount of FAR as they increase the amount of affordable units. So if they, there's a minimum requirement of inclusionary housing of 15 percent. And then, once they go up to 20 percent, then they can have .275 instead of .25 percent FAR. So they're getting an incentive for providing more affordable units.
Okay. So this is...
And then it's up to 25, the 4.40. If they went 25 percent of the total project and provided 25 percent of the units as affordable, they'd get a FAR of .40, which is an incentive over the base .25.
What, okay. So these are percentages, so, does that say that in the text? Or how do you find that out? Is it in Title 17, Chapter 17?
Well, it says the following FAR bonuses for single-family lots, starts out that, and they're referring to this table, as the following.
Okay. But it's only over 15?
Yes. That, well, they're obligated to provide 15 from the beginning. That's, that's already an obligation.
Okay. So, for a single-family house, they have to provide 15 percent?
Well, yeah. And these are projects that we're talking five or more units in the project. If you're building a single house, of course, there's nothing, up to four units, there's nothing. But once you subdivide into five or greater units, then these...
That's the part I'm missing, so...
Yeah, these provisions kick in.
These, this actually, I guess it's all the red stuff, is under, uh, under single-family houses. That's where I got confused.
So what I would suggest, because I have a question about the clarity, and other council members may as well, if you could propose, Bob, to add a sentence of clarifying language to the same section, Councilmember Muller, would that potentially...
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I...
Clear it up?
Yeah.
I think there's a little bit of a disconnect between the text above the chart and then the numbers in the chart. So your explanation, given verbally just now, I think clarifies it, but that's not in here in writing.
Right.
So if you could maybe add a sentence...
That would be very helpful.
And I think this is excerpted to where, let's see, there's five. There may be a section missing already that it could be in there. I'll make sure it's there. If it's not, I'll add it.
Otherwise, I mean, I think this is great. I can tell you guys did a lot of work. I really like the duplex clarification a lot.
Great. Any other questions about the staff report? And this will be the time we welcome public comment on this item, and we have no public, so I'll invite Councilmember Hall, since he did sit on this...
Mayor, just for clarification, it is a public hearing, so I need you to formally...
I'll formally open the public hearing.
And then you can formally close.
Invite the public to comment.
Exactly. And you can close the public hearing.
Anyone that would like to represent themselves as a member of the public at this time, that's here in the room? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of the hearing and invite Councilmember Hall to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar. And I would just like to remind everyone in council chambers and on the council that, you know, we started this project over a year ago, in October, and it was one that was, we felt very important, because we want to protect the character of our community. And we've heard, not just from our constituents, but from ourselves, that that's an important part. And I know there's a couple of other pieces that will be forthcoming, and this was really the first piece of this project, to lay out what we believe the character and the design within Old Town should be. Recognizing that the more clarity and transparency we can provide in this, not only helps us as a community sort of establish what it is we think Old Town is, but it also then helps future applicants stay within the constraints, or at least the guidelines that we're presenting, so that they can, so that they have a fair chance to develop the home of their dreams. And that was one challenge we were tackling the entire time we were looking at this, was not to overencumber a future applicant for what they might want to do if they were to acquire a property in Old Town, but also to provide at least guidance with what we believe. And we did, we did a lot of work in driving around and looking at photos, but to help provide our framework of what the essence of Old Town is. And we were lucky enough to have both Rob Anglin, or Vice Chair of the ZDRB, Rob Anglin, who is an architect by trade. We were lucky enough to have Chair James of the ZDRB, who actually lives in Old Town, and we were lucky enough to have his home and driveways and other things as examples that we could try to use to help us lay out what this ultimately would look like. And then obviously, the mayor with his guidance and commitment, because there's a lot of time that's involved in these additional activities. And so I feel like we've gone through a really almost exhaustive process, and that there was a lot of follow-up by staff, and both Sandra and Bob did put in significant effort, as well as Rob, who was gracious enough to drive us around. That's our, I forget his role, the title of, what he does, he's the inspector, I guess, for the properties. Is that right? Yeah. But the reality is, you know, a lot of people put a lot of effort into this, and there is, as you mentioned, Councilmember Muller, a lot of important things that we've included in here. And again, it's supposed to be a guide for folks, but it's also hopefully going to allow us to evaluate and look forward into Old Town, so that it continues to evolve in a manner that is consistent with what we all inherited here as residents of this community. So I think it's a great piece of work, and I know that, you know, it was a, it was a long, hard battle, and I can recall a couple of meetings ago, people asking if this was ever going to get concluded, so we could move on to the next phase. And I believe that this document, I believe it puts us at the precipice of what we needed to be, to be able to conclude. And so I thank the mayor and all of those others, and everyone in the council for their efforts, because it really is going to be, hopefully, something that we can stand tall and proud on for the next, you know, at least the next council meeting, until someone decides to revise it. But the reality is, we did put a lot of effort into it, and I think it's a good representation for what we would like Old Town to be. And so I encourage everyone to support it.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Muller, any comments?
No, I also think it was, it, I don't know how long it really had been since we'd really updated it, at least that piece in its entirety. I know we kind of take a whack at things every now and then. So I think that was very good. I think that putting the information, I personally, but I don't like all the Tuscan looks, so I'm glad you really dealt with that, too. I think it just doesn't fit. And so I'm glad that was added in there. And these things, just take this kind of effort, I think, over time, probably back when it was last put together, they didn't have outdoor kitchens and barbecues and things like that. So I could tell that a lot of thought went in there. And as I mentioned earlier, I think, you know, we ran into a problem with a duplex, and I think you really handled it really well, how you kind of put that in there. So I think it's good, and hopefully it'll accomplish your goals of making things clear without making things more onerous, which I think it does.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Well, I agree. It's, you know, obviously, a lot of work went into, you know, examining all the details, and so I want to thank you for doing that. And, you know, it makes a lot of sense because of the special quality of that area. So I'm very much in support of it. Thank you for your efforts on it.
Thank you. And I think Councilmember Hall did a very good job of summarizing my comments as well. I do want to acknowledge also Bob and Sandra and all the effort that went into this. As you look at the language, there's as much red as there is black in here. And so it was, it was a thorough evaluation and kind of cleansing of the section. So we were really trying not to be too restrictive, too judgmental, but this being Old Town, there is a characteristic that is special, that we were trying to not only protect, but identify. Our field trip in the van, it was an eye-opener with how many different styles of everything are going on, from rooftops to street frontages to, to street surfaces and apron surfaces. The difference between an apron and a driveway and a, you know, we got into a lot of technical issues. I think this is a very good and very complete updating, and I think kind of purging of some old language, some old, maybe unnecessary descriptors. So it was very beneficial also to have our ZDRB partners with their professional expertise. That really helped me out, I know. So I can support it. I look forward to this kind of process, moving some of the other aspects ahead, like you said, where we've got our other ad hoc committees that are ready to move forward with this new information. So hopefully, we will approve this first reading and see it come back again next month. Yes?
And for the record, I should mention that ZDRB reviewed the changes at their November 13th meeting and supported the proposed ordinance.
I think it was a hearty yes from the chair, as you stated.
So I have one more question. Bob mentioned in his staff report that there is going to be an update that you're going to add in terms of...
On cabanas and gazebo.
So if we make a motion and approve this and waive the reading, do we add that, including the update on...
Please.
We already have amendments to this, so we would be approving the, as amended, which included in the staff report, the recommendation.
Okay.
A motion maker can call that out specifically if desired, but I think it's also expected from the staff report. Probably wouldn't hurt to clarify it, though. So is there a motion to introduce and waive this, or waive the reading on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 409-12, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yountville, amending the Yountville Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17 dot 08, definitions in Title 18, Chapter 18 dot 20, Old Town Historic District Design, Chapter 18 dot 36, Residential Buildings, and Chapter 18 dot 44, Accessory Buildings and Facilities. Waive the reading and amend, as discussed, regarding gazebo's and outdoor structures with walls and openings.
And this is actually an introduction, not a motion to adopt this yet. It's an introduction...
Yeah. So we're going to, and we're going to waive the first reading.
Correct.
And FAR and other typos as identified by the director.
Yes. So the amendments as discussed by council and presented by staff.
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. So we will look at that slightly amended version, probably in our December meeting, for a potential formal adoption.
On the 4th.
Great.
Good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Well done.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 13, our first administrative regular item, Hopper Creek Improvement Project.
Mayor, council, I'm filling in for Public Works Director Wadsworth, who's on a well-deserved vacation. Tonight's item is a relatively succinct item, but it's one that is on the agenda here, rather than the consent calendar, because of wanting to ensure the council and the community, because of the magnitude of the dollars and where we're going with this, everybody's aware. But to give you a short order, the item today is authorization to enter into an agreement in the amount of 724,753 using Measure A funds, with GHD for the design, environmental clearance permitting, and construction support services for a variety of flood reduction improvement projects on Hopper Creek and Velagio Channel. And as the council may remember, approximately two years ago, we concluded a very detailed conceptual study that evaluated a portfolio of potential projects that, at a conceptual level, were presented that could have a positive impact on flood mitigation in the community. At that time, again, at a conceptual design level, the council identified six that they felt they wanted to continue to pursue, and those were incorporated into our... felt they wanted to continue to pursue, and those were incorporated into our draft CIP project. This project moves forward so that this firm is retained to actually do the full design, the final analysis, recommendation, a construction feasibility, constructibility, and then they would actually issue and put out the RFPs for the project. So it's a big, significant step, and more importantly, it's not a one-year, that $724,000 is going to take approximately two years. The town solicited an RFP, received five proposals. Of those proposals, three were selected for interview. The interview panel included the Public Works Director, John Draper, our contract engineer, Lee Sharp, Executive Director for Napa County Resource Conversation District, Philip Miller, Deputy Director, Public Works, Napa County Flood Control, the mayor, and myself and Graham Wadsworth as the Evaluation and Scoring Committee. The results of that process led to the selection or identification of GHD as the preferred vendor. The town manager then spent about two weeks negotiating with GHD with regard to fee and scope, and as the mayor may recognize, the proposed contract amount is a reduction from what was originally proposed. Again, for most of you, this is a very straightforward, you know, it's a continuation of things that the council has put in motion over the past three years. I want to stress to everybody that it's a, this is a big-ticket item, but we anticipate that this will lead to the actual award of construction projects, potentially six to seven different projects, four to six, depending on the final selection, that will be constructed over the next several years using our Measure A flood measure, sales tax money, which will be coming to a conclusion in 2018. So it's a pretty exciting time, and with that, I'm open to questions if you may have.
And just one other bit that I'm going to add to that informally is the staff report, is that, excuse me, in the evaluation of the list of projects, there may be a determination during this that one or more, excuse me, one or more of these elements may no longer be necessary to achieve the type of drainage mitigation and, and other impacts that we're trying to achieve. So this is a list of, as you said, I think up to seven projects that may, may be determined that we don't need to do all seven because the first few are taking care of the problem.
Or if something has a, a change in its feasibility or constructibility or its permitability, it may, we may choose to do something different in order to achieve that same net result that the mayor is referring. So we will get to a further game plan of which recommended projects move forward, and then the, you know, very similar to the process we just concluded with our town hall, that we'll actually get to the RFP process to get that out into the hands of construction firms.
Any questions about the staff report? Councilmember Muller.
So along that vein, if we don't get the $725,000 from, from Measure A, then we'll just go back and decide what we can do with, with what we get, is that how it's going to work?
Correct, but let me clarify, one, we have a $2 million-plus balance in Measure A funds that are earmarked for the town, so
So we is $2 million for Yountville?
Correct, that's our share, yet remaining in our balance. So this 725 goes to the firm, and it's a, you know, like I say, it's a multi-year contract, it also includes the construction, the design, the feasibility, construction management services. So, you know, basically, what we're attempting to do for economy of scale and also is to do all of these projects more or less in a turnkey approach, so that we're doing the design we can do as the mayor assessed, does this one make sense? You know, if we're doing an extension to Beard Ditch, do we need to do three, or does one do it? But then, because of the nature, as you know, I have a preference for trying to combine construction projects, because our lunch gets eaten as an organization because of the administrative burden for project management, the RFP issuing to project inspection. So I like to do more comprehensive projects rather than a bunch of small projects. So the idea would be, once we finalize that four, five, six, then we're going to design all of it, and it may end up, we award two or three construction projects and get that all done that way. So, you know, within three years, three and a half, we would anticipate all of that work scale being wrapped up, and then we'll evaluate what our Measure A project fund balance is, and if there's anything additionally we want to do, or I'm anticipating if there is a fund balance, we will apply at that point to time to put it into a maintenance reserve fund, especially earmarked towards some of the projects or the flood wall.
Sounds good to me. I have one last question. Never really understood what the Velagio Channel, is that just runoff because of our building, is that connected to a stream? I could never figure that out. And who's really responsible for that? Like, parts of Hopper Creek, if a residence is nearby there, they have some responsibility? Is that all of our responsibility?
Velagio Channel is a shared responsibility between the property owner, the flood control district, and the town at times helps facilitate. For those that aren't familiar, the Velagio Channel, as it's popularly named, actually includes runoff that's coming from the other side of the highway, as well as retention that starts up approximately at the French Laundry Gardens, and then the channel is a concrete line, then it opens up. It's that ditch-type structure that you can see along, it opens up really just north of the V Marketplace, following along the property line, if you will, it is on the property of the Vintage Estate Group, and then that channel turns a corner at California, and then actually goes underground and underneath the Hotel Yountville property. So it's, it is a, both an underground and an above-ground channel with habitat and things that get the permitting agencies involved, and also, if not managed, create potential flood mitigation that can exacerbate a flood if it's not taken care of.
Thanks.
Councilor Hall, questions about the report?
Yes, please, thank you, mayor. I think Steve, town manager, I have one question on page 404 of the staff report, and it's the last line in the first paragraph. Just to make sure I understand, are you, are you there?
Mm-hmm.
It starts with the word additional, Measure A funding will be requested for the fiscal year 2013-14 budget to reimburse town expenses for the balance of the GHD compensation in the agreement. What if, what if it's requested and not received?
One very valid question, but again, I refer to the fact that we have a, we have a $2 million balance, that's our revenue, and all of these projects are consistent, and these are contin, you know, this is a continuation of the approved scope of work. The county has a structure where they ask us for a dollar amount first that we have to submit, and then we're always tracking against, so what's going to happen in the next year is, we're basically going to identify the $2 million, and basically say, we're going to, you know, here's our contract with our consultant, and over the next two years, we're going to, you know, go through the process. So the, Graham is very detailed, and what you actually saw in that paragraph is the fact that there's a dollar amount for the balance of the work that they're going to do this fiscal year, which is approximately six months by the time they do it. So we wanted to make sure that the current allocation from the flood control district was adequate. Now, the other thing is, you know, this would be a situation if it wasn't, in this case it is, so we feel comfortable that they're not going to exceed our available revenue in that work scope, but if it was, we would go ask the county for an amendment and be able to take the agreement and the work scope and show them that we're spending Measure A money legitimately.
Okay. I only ask because, I mean
No, it's a good question.
When you put something in a report, it means there's some relevance to it.
It is, and I
I want to make sure it's addressed.
The point I want to do, the exercise that we did here was, this is a multi-year agreement with GHD.
Right.
So first of all, we're not writing a check tomorrow for $724,000. This is billable hours, and a work product has to be delivered, and what Graham and I did, we currently have an available scope to draw down from the flood control district, so we did an exercise just to make sure that the anticipated scope of work for the next six months was going to be within that budget amount, or did we need to go ask the county? And what you see in that paragraph is Graham's explanation that, yes, we don't anticipate having to go ask for more money until our next fiscal year drawdown in July of 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Long answer to your question, but hopefully that makes sense now.
I understand.
Councilmember Doran Becker, any questions about the report?
I do have one, and that is that I don't understand the difference between a culvert and a diversion. Do you, can you sort of describe what a diversion is?
I'll do my best. A diversion is usually a structure, and it's something that is a, an addition or built into the environment that will divert water flow. A culvert or a ditch is a channel, sometimes man-made, sometimes naturally made. In some cases, you will see a diversion structure in a culvert so that it forces water away from one area and into another pattern.
I see, thank you.
The example being at the west end of Forester Lane, if you can visualize, immediately next to the walking path, before it used to be closed, there's a large concrete structure with some big steel beams in it, and a, and a pile of sandbags and, or other material that might, might not be sandbags, but when we had a significant flood incident several years ago, that water would be flowing down the creek, it would hop over the edge of the, the bank and go into that man-made diversion, so that it would then be diverted out to Beard Ditch.
I see.
Yes, Councilmember Hall?
That's fine.
So Steve, just a quick question, because I did read in here that obviously we talk a little bit about the history of flooding in, in town, and obviously the outset of why all this is being discussed. Is it expected that with this work or this effort, that there will be something, because you mentioned FEMA in here and how the portion of the town, specifically the neighborhoods in that area, would be the, I have to think about this, the east of town, down Mulberry, Heather, I don't think Oak Circle's in that, but then that the FEMA maps would ultimately take this information and be reevaluated, redrawn, because I know there are constituents that have that question.
This will not have significant impact on that, because the flooding that you're referring to, Councilmember Hall, is not generally Hopper Creek-influenced flooding, it is from the massive overfill, or, you know, when the Napa River overflows its banks and comes up. So our current situation, we actually went through and did a FEMA analysis and applied for some grants, and unfortunately, the flooding that we get from Hopper Creek, while it's a little bit more frequent, the intensity and the design of what the community has done, while we end up with occasional nuisance and messes, we'd actually don't end up with flood inundated and damaged homes, so we didn't score very well in our ability to try to get grant money on that, because we just, if you, for those that are familiar with the Oak Circle neighborhood, it actually, you know, it's not, you know, for a couple days, it can be pretty gnarly, but the water generally flows down. Same thing with Mulberry, it will flow down, and you generally, you know, it may move up, you know, five or six, 10 feet into the yards, but the elevation, the biggest area that we have is when you have the, you know, everything aligns the wrong way and you get the Napa River overflowing, and, and the area I think you're talking about from a FEMA map structure is, that's not going to change by any of these work.
That's
But we hope to prevent the nuisance, which is our most frequent, and then it results in street cleaning, additional public works, maintenance work, so, you know, our hope is that we can avoid that and minimize that experience.
Okay, thank you.
Now would be the time I'd invite public comment. We still have none, so I'll invite continued discussion or possible action. One thing I just wanted to remind folks, and one lesson that I learned during the interview process, is what the town manager was just referring to, many of our streets are actually designed to
Be our flood control.
Yeah, be our flood control, and, you know, I'm on Forester Lane, that is meant to take a lot of the runoff and channel it to Beard Ditch. Other streets that have that nuisance flooding are meant to do exactly what they do. It doesn't feel like it when it's in the middle of the night and you look outside and the street is full of water, but for the most part, that system is working properly. The other thing that was kind of an eye-opener was, looking down that list of, of projects, they, they, multiple applicants mentioned, you can't just reduce the flow of water into the town limits and expect all of your drainage issues and flood issues to go away. We have to have enough flow to handle the debris that's collected and carried into our drainage system, and so if you reduce the flow too much, then the debris becomes your bigger problem, and it then creates other side effects. So it's about measuring the flow, controlling the flow, controlling the, the amount of water that's trying to get through the diversion channels and culverts as they're built. So it's, it's obviously a very complicated system. I think it works better than, than some folks realize, because they still see the streets with a lot of water flowing down, or even sewer drains being, you know, clogged or backed up or whatever, but by and large, that network of, of drainage is, is functioning. But with our analysis, clearly there are ways to improve it, so that we don't have any additional damage, so. And with that, additional discussion or, or action? Any other comments, the council, on, on this? And just a reminder to the public, this is Measure A money that is designated to drainage improvements. This is not taking away from paying off the flood wall, this is not general fund money from the town that we're using in a discretionary manner, this is restricted funds through Measure A.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3074-12, approving professional services agreement with GHD for environmental clearance, design permitting, and construction support services for flood reduction improvements, and bank repairs on Hopper Creek and Velagio Channel in the amount of $724,753.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to Item 13B, which is our Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency Bicycle Advisory Committee appointment, and we had an interview earlier this evening, and I think we'll have our, our town clerk tell us about it.
Thank you, mayor, yes, this is a appointment of one Yountville representative to the NCTPA Bicycle Advisory Committee. Our previous member, Kelly Felker, had to resign due to relocating out of town limits, and our board and commission, commission policy indicates that we have those members live within town limits. We had a lengthy notice of vacancy process, originally posted in July of this year, and had to extend the notice until, open until filled, or until we received an application, which we did in October, from Joe Tagliabashi. And council interviewed him earlier this evening, and council submitted their vote tallies and have unanimously recommended him for appointment to be the Yountville representative, and staff is requesting a motion to that effect.
Thank you very much, and before we, we vote on this, I do want to thank Mr. Tagliabashi again. He brings a, a very desirable scope of not only experience but personal interest that I think came across with, with all of us, so with that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Joe Tagliabashi to serve as the Yountville representative to the NCTPA BAC Bike Advisory Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for stepping forward, Mr. Tagliabashi, it's, there's some exciting things coming up with the additional miles of the, the vine trail, and really maximizing our, our Yountville mile, so thanks very much. Move on to staff informational reports, do we have any tonight?
I will share two sentences early, we will be recruiting for two more boards and commissions, we will have openings on our Parks and Community Services Commission, and then we will also be recruiting for the Yountville representative on our local food advisory council, so those, keep an eye out for those, those will be coming out in the next week or two.
Did I see NCTPA having a member, or was that the Park and Rec that was moving out of town?
Wasn't that the ZDRB?
That was just, just, well
I mean, ZDRB, I'm sorry.
I haven't heard about, I've heard about that, but haven't received
Okay.
I haven't heard about, I've heard about that, but haven't received official word yet, but that may be coming also.
It will be coming.
Yes, so we might have three.
Got it. Any other staff reports? Yes, Bob? Oh, no, ready to just push the button?
[laughing]
Okay, let's move on to council meeting reports and comments. I'll just very briefly discuss the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency. The one highlight I'll bring up, well, certainly, everyone was quite pleased with the outcome of Measure T, and having that local sales tax money, starting in 2018, to help repair our streets and roads, that was really a satisfying outcome for that, so that we can stop waiting for the state or federal government to try to do their job, and we're gonna help with our visitors to get things done ourselves. But I also wanted to mention, just one, one mention here, because of the expanded transit center and the expanded and changed routes of the transit system, the NCTPA Board granted permission for the director to find off-site parking of their fleet that, and so they're gonna enter an agreement with the Napa County Fairgrounds, since they are now next-door neighbors, to house that fleet. So, they are bringing on new vehicles for the expanded service and the changes in routes, so people should start to feel those changes soon. They are delayed in moving into the new transit facility, they're still talking December, but just not the first week of December. So, I'm not gonna promise any dates, because they wouldn't promise them to the board, so potentially before 2013.
So, what happens to the fleet during the fair?
They will need to be moved to another location. Those details are being worked out by the necessary staff. The other report I will give, again briefly, because it seems like our Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District meetings, the information is outdated by the time I'm able to bring it here, but the in-water work has been completed. Now, they are focusing more on things like paving, bridge work, and other things that might be a little more visual to folks, because they have been doing extensive work in the channel, but that's not always recognizable, so. But getting in, or completing the in-water work before the winter season was critical, and they were able to do that, so that was good to hear. And they're continuing to send flood district representation back to Washington to try to shake the Army Corps of Engineers purse strings a little bit to get them to flood the project that they say they really love. Let's go to the Watershed Information Center and Conservancy of Napa County. Do we have a report?
Yes, we do. We had our meeting on Thursday, November 15th, and we had it at the White Barn on Sulphur Springs Road in St. Helena, and we had it there for a reason, which was that we were talking about watershed reparation and, and mitigation of flooding, and it was very interesting to see they, how they had taken the, some of the culverts out, actually, along the sides of the roads near the White Barn, on the White Barn property, because they found that the water, sometimes the culverts put the, you know, went against sort of the natural flow of the, the hillside, or however the natural flow was going to be, so they found that using more natural products sometimes worked better, for example, just letting it come across country roads, rural roads like that, and then having rocks that would, it would filter down through the rocks, and then out into the, into the, just the surrounding area, rather than having it, you know, go through this culvert and come out and, and then get all balaxed up. So, that was very interesting. And then, they also mentioned that in 2013, there's going to be a watershed symposium, and they will be talking about a variety of issues, including re-oke-ing the valley, which has become, or is becoming, a topic that many people want to pursue in the rural areas and in the vineyards. This, this valley was, for many centuries, full of oak stands, and so, they feel that that helps with the watershed, you know, keeping the ground, well, in a lot of different ways, it helps with keeping the, the rainwaters and flooding down, and also providing shade, and so a lot of different reasons, but it's going to be very exciting, so I'll keep you up to date on when that watershed symposium will be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other specific meeting reports? Yes?
Actually, the Quarterly Napa Youth Gang Violence Commission met, and I apologize, I had a personal conflict that evening, and I need to file that report at our next council meeting, when I've reviewed the minutes after they've been distributed. I haven't had a chance to, they haven't distributed them, so I...
Thank you.
Comments?
Okay, comments, council comments?
I just think that this is worthy of an announcement, that the bowling alley at the Veterans Home has opened. We've been talking about this for a long time. It opened last Wednesday, from 1:00 to 3:00. They're gonna keep those two hours for about a week, and work out the bowling bugs, I guess, and then it's gonna be open full-time. So, I encourage everyone to go take a look at the bowling alley and get a beer at the tavern.
Were you there?
I did not look at the bowling alley, it was, I, my meeting was over at 10:30 and didn't open till 1:00, I did not go back, I apologize.
Maybe that's where our allied council reporters are this evening.
Well, maybe it's been open now, full-time, so, anyway, the bowling alley at the Veterans Home is open and operational.
Other, other comments?
I have an announcement.
Go ahead, announcement?
I'd like to remind everyone that on December the 1st, 6:00 PM is the Focus Holiday Dinner, and if you are interested in getting your tickets, they are $25 apiece, and I guess the easiest way to do that is probably online, or to contact someone at Focus. And I don't have that information in front of me, but it can be found at yountvillefocus.com, www.yountvillefocus.com.
Great. A few comments or announcements I'd like to make also. Let's not forget, this Friday is our town's Festival of Lights, where we partner with our Chamber of Commerce and all our businesses to really, literally shine a light on, on our beautiful town. We did get a little preview this year, thanks to the Napa Valley Film Festival. I personally heard several rave reviews of how the town looked with the lights on for the festival. I think it was certainly a distinct advantage that they were on during the film festival. Also, I just wanted to acknowledge all the local volunteers that helped make that festival a success. I think, again, I heard nothing but, but real positive comments about the screening venues here in Yountville. I know that, especially Sunday evening, in the closing night screenings, we had standing-room-only crowds in the community center, so that was really encouraging to see. Also, as part of that week, but a separate event, it was the second annual, it was actually called a rededication of the Roots of Peace Memorial Grove, and that's a grove of six trees that were planted last year on November 11th, Veterans Day of 2011, that represent each of the six wars that have taken place, and they received permission from the state to plant those trees as a memorial to all those that have served in those wars. So, if you have a chance and you haven't been there yet, go up, as you're driving toward the Yountville Community Pool, it's off to your right-hand side, and you'll see a plaque and those trees as they're growing, and so there was a rededication there this year on Veterans Day again. Also, there was a really strong lineup of veterans-themed films as part of the film festival that were provided free to anyone that wanted to go to the Lincoln Theater, and that was my last announcement, if folks haven't seen it in the Yountville Sun, but the Lincoln Theater is going to reopen. They are planning officially to open December 1st, but that really will be an administrative operational opening with a full program expected more like summer or fall of 2013, which is a reminder of how long it takes that type of thing to get, get on its feet. It took almost a year of negotiations with the state and with a third-party operator that has come on board. IMG Artists is the third-party operator that will support the reformed Lincoln Theater Foundation, which is our local nonprofit. So, kudos especially to Michael Madden, and to the State of California, to our local Veterans Home administrators, and some other local folks that really brought this all together. It did take quite a bit of cooperation, quite a bit of conversation as well, but we can expect, I think they are planning gala in early 2013, to really kind of formally and in a grand way, launch this, this rebirth, but folks can start counting on and signing up to volunteer, again, for Lincoln Theater next year, so that's exciting. Any other comments from council? If, yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
I have a question. I know that the community center is hosting an art show of, of pieces that have been made by the veterans, and I wanted to point that out, there, we didn't really have a grand opening, but I think it'll be up through December, so stop by and see the artwork of our veterans hanging in our community center.
Yes, also, and Samantha, about Thanksgiving Day, could you maybe speak to the schedule? I know that there are gonna...
I can try.
If you know the schedule of dinner service.
I'm sorry, I don't know the exact schedule, but you can call Paul Moyer and get more information on that. His number is 944-2777, and he's fine with me giving that out. So, Paul and his wife Linda have worked really hard to organize this event, and I do know they are still looking for volunteers, so if you have some time on Thanksgiving Day to work one of the shifts, I know that they really can still use some help. And if you're a Quanis member, tomorrow, we're setting up at lunchtime, so hope to see you there.
I believe there, I think there are two services in the early afternoon.
I'm gonna use, I'm gonna do the same thing as Samantha, and I believe it's a 1:30 setting and a 3:00 o'clock setting, so...
But make sure you confirm that.
You need to call, and I will say, reservations are required, and there's a fixed number of spots, and I'm, I'm probably gonna lean towards they're full rather than they're not.
Yeah, they typically fill up, so I don't, I have not heard that they're full yet, but I would say, don't hesitate to call now.
Right. Great, well, thank you very much. So, I think that's all we have for this evening, and I will welcome a motion for adjournment to our next regularly scheduled town council meeting, which is Tuesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM. Is there such a motion?
I make a motion for adjournment to our next scheduled meeting on December the 4th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.